Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this working board of education meeting on April 13th.
Can you hear her?
And we'll have a roll call, please. Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
I'm here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Cartha?
Here.
Ms. Quattrucci? Here. And we'll open tonight with the public hearing. This public hearing is now called to order. The District 65 School Board holds this public hearing to determine the inclusion of Lincoln's Birthday and Columbus Day as instructional days. We will hear any public testimony regarding the waiver. Please keep in mind all comments should be addressed to the board, should be relevant to the topic, and should not be of a personal nature, and speakers will be given three minutes to make remarks. Are there any comments from the public? This concludes our public hearing. The board will vote on all holiday waivers at tonight's meeting. Okay. So our personnel approval, Claudia's line here. So Omar, would you like to?
Yep. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommended personnel changes.
Second.
Roll call? Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes six to zero. Now the approval of the holiday waiver. Omar?
I move that the Board of Education approve the holiday waiver to include Lincoln's Birthday and Columbus Day as instructional days.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, the motion passes six to zero. We're onto our first discussion item, and it's the math acceleration update.
And I think I'm gonna kick it off. If I may, can I slip in one commentary about the calendar survey? So it relates to the last moment. The District 65 Calendar Committee is conducting a survey to gather stakeholder input on the development of the school calendar for the 2016-17 school year. Survey is gonna ask or asks questions about school start and end dates, non-attendance days, professional learning days, emergency school closures, and the importance of calendar alignment between District 65 and District 202. Survey is open now and ready to roll. It takes approximately 10 minutes to complete, and we'll keep it open until Wednesday, April 22nd. Paper copies of the survey will also be available at schools, and we really encourage all to participate in this to gather input that we have.
I can just add two things. One, the survey is available in Spanish as well. And we've already had 400 parents respond and 70 teachers, and that's just from this morning. So we're really encouraged by those numbers.
So we're looking for 400 more, and we're really happy. So thank you. And we really do invite and want to engage in the feedback that we receive. So now let me shift and pivot to the conversation about mathematics and mathematics acceleration that Jess Reyes will lead on behalf of the administration. And he'll provide a lot of overview. This is an information session to be able to provide information on where we're at and where we're going.
I think because we were gonna ask for any comments before we opened. I'm sorry to jump in like that. But in a working board meeting, because we would like input into our discussion, we offer an opportunity for anyone to comment on the math discussion before we have it.
Absolutely.
Is anyone here to offer commentary, or just? No? Okay.
So and we'll look forward to any type of feedback that we can get. So this is an information session to be able to go through a lot of material, and Jess has a PowerPoint to be able to try to explain the information that we have. We have both substantive issues to put on the table and logistical issues because as we head towards the end of the year and we think about mathematics placement for the year to come, we need to be ready and on our toes to be able to do the type of work that needs to be done, as will be suggested soon in the presentation around the types of assessments we will be using, going from many, many assessments to a shorter, fewer number. And there's a lot of detail in here. And I wanna highlight a couple macro themes. One is, in our attempt to be transparent, we're really trying to move the process from something that seemingly was less transparent over the years past to something that's much more open and clear. And we'll again take feedback on that. We wanna be consistent across the district. I've heard from parents that I've heard that child A gets this, and child B gets this, and they're different but they have similar backgrounds. So we wanna create a set of standards that are consistent. A lot of what's embedded in here includes really important work with District 202. And when we think about the journey that a young person takes from the early primary years through middle school into high school and into the end of high school, the question of how do we know that children are on track to succeed at the highest levels in mathematics is really important to us, and how can we actually make sure that children are placed here? There's some really interesting commentary that's driven by the Common Core State Standards in Mathematics around compacting content. Jess will is much more of an expert than I am, but we'll explain that. And indeed, we're both proposing how we're gonna make next steps, and we're learning along the way. And that's been part of the open process that we've had and that we will continue to have. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jess.
Cool. Thanks so much, Paul. Completely agree with all the things said in the introduction. But before I begin, I just wanna just kind of iterate to folks that a lot of various stakeholders were involved in the process. And just wanna take the time before I begin the presentation to thank our teachers, thank our staff here, our community members, our colleagues over at 202. It's been really helpful to really get to this point and look forward to learning more from each and every one of you. So as we begin, this kind of takes the outline essentially of the memo. And so I realize there's a lot of detail in that, and I'll try to stay brief on it. Whereas on some slides, I know that I'll have to get into a little bit of detail to really try to explain, you know, the work that we're doing. But at a high level, we're looking at mathematics acceleration updates. What are the, what's the context for that? What was the process and outcomes for stakeholder engagement? Our goals for math acceleration, course sequence updates, and placement criteria and process updates. So the really big context considerations and realizing that this is a text-heavy slides, the big picture and the big takeaway was to reiterate basically some of Paul's points, and that is that Common Core is a really big game changer and that it really forces us to think about what implication that has for our course taking, particularly our accelerated courses. One thing that resonated in a lot of conversations even from day one on my first day on the job, when I attended a Math Matters meeting, was the idea of really clear student criteria and placement procedures and clear communication to our parents and to our family members. So this provides a high-level overview of our stakeholder engagement process. Actually, there's three phases here, but I'd like to point out a pre-phase one, and that is, you know, that even from the very beginning of the year, there was a lot of listening and learning that really, really helped drive kind of the way that we would move forward with things. Phase one was really this idea of building committees to define the course sequence and to develop student criteria and process for placement. And it really started with a core group of D65 fifth through eighth grade math teachers developing the baseline recommendations that we would continue to build on. And from there, the process continued forward with engaging other D65 staff, leadership, principals, a number of other folks, our colleagues over at ETHS, and members of our community. Each step along the way, thinking about how we would continue this iteration of building off of the current state of the recommendations, continuing to get feedback, synthesizing, and refining along the way. And so phase two and phase three are really more about building awareness and continuing the work moving forward as we go into student placement and into the summer, thinking about the year beyond. Again, a big thank you to the number of folks that were involved. Over 40 folks were involved in providing feedback along the way. A varied group of stakeholders along the way, so really, really very informative and helpful in this process. So we'll go right away into our goals. And ultimately, the idea of acceleration is to provide access to high-quality and rigorous courses for well-prepared students, to ensure that the criteria and the placement procedures are very clear and that we're doing the best that we can to identify students that will be in a position to succeed in these courses with a really big idea, a big goal of, you know, providing opportunity for students to be on the pathway to take accelerated AP courses in their high school careers. So with that frame in mind, we'll dive right into the course sequence. But before I get into the updates and where we are with our current course sequence, it's important to frame this from the era in which we find ourselves, and that is in the Common Core era. Important to understand that the Common Core authors have provided guidance on what implications the new standards have on acceleration and what we should consider in that. And the really big changes that emerged to the surface is the idea of skipping material as creating gaps in student schemes of learning. And that likely that would be very impactful and potentially detrimental as students get into more advanced classes where they might have to lean on the conceptual understanding that that would have been built in courses that would potentially be skipped. But that the counter to that, as guidance and recommendation, was really more about how we might compact learning, which is basically compressing courses or two courses into one year or three courses into two years, or that idea. And that really starts to build this capacity for students to eliminate or deter those gaps that would potentially happen if they were to skip whole courses from one year to the next. So that's really important to frame our work. So when we look at the current course sequence, you'll notice up here that it is defined by course skipping. And we have a number of different paths, but each path, when you basically go on it, goes from fifth grade mathematics to seventh grade mathematics, or sixth grade mathematics to Algebra I. And so the challenges that surfaced with our stakeholder meetings really got to those Common Core recommendations earlier that I had stated about gaps in learning and really thinking about how we need to position our students to have built the conceptual understanding that's really important for accessing future mathematics. And then there's the really persistent equity and stratification issue that really is important to pay attention to in this work that we're doing. So with those challenges having been surfaced in our stakeholder meetings, the idea is to transition into a frame where we think about the current model of course skipping and how we transition into acceleration as compacting. It would be very easy to very simply state, well, from one year to the next, we're gonna go course skipping and then compaction the next year. But the truth of the matter is that the kind of time that we have to invest to be thoughtful in how we position our students and how we develop the kind of content in a compacted course is very complicated. And so we need to take the extra year, hence the transition year in 1516, to really be thoughtful in how we work with our teachers, with how we work internally with other folks, as well as other folks in the academic community to really think about what that course looks like. So before I go more deeply into the detail of what the two years look like, the transition year of 1516 and where we would land in 1617 in the compacted sequence, is to really take note of this box that I have up here, and that is that we recognize, and I would say unequivocally, that there are cases of true exceptionalism that happened in the district and in other places in the United States. But they're very rare. And if those cases do happen, I'd wanna say that we wouldn't handle those on a case-by-case basis. But the course sequence that we're describing by and large suits the vast majority of our students. So a deeper dive into the two years after this year. So if the idea is to go to a course sequence where we're compacting, I'll actually start on where we're hoping to land or where we're aspiring to land. And that is the 1617 school year. So I'll draw your attention to that slide or to that side of the screen first. And in essence, what you start to see is that instead of the course skipping model that you're seeing, students would then, in this new model, would compact learning and have a new course called the Math 6-7 course. And in that version of the course, students would be able to learn sixth grade mathematics as well as seventh grade mathematics to be able to eliminate those content gaps that exist in our current course skipping model. But we also recognize that that brings one path for our students, and we need to also think about any other on-ramps that make sense. And so a summer Math 7 course was where the group landed as far as one idea of an additional pathway to be able to get onto this more accelerated path. So if the idea is to compact and the earlier comment about how complicated it is to develop a compacted course, then we need the 1516 school year as the year of planning and the year of being really thoughtful and deliberate for setting up the conditions for a successful Math 6-7 course. So 1516 basically represents a status quo type of year where we still have some course skipping going on. But paying close attention to the earlier comment I made about the Common Core, and that is that we wanna make sure that we're building a firm base, a firm conceptual base. So acceleration begins in sixth grade in the 1516 school year. And acceleration at K5 may potentially happen, but that's really done on a more case-by-case basis. So there will be things in place, processes in place for identifying those students. But in terms of where we will start in the district, we'll start by and large at sixth grade. So I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the Algebra I pilot as well. As we recognize that in the grand scheme of trying to provide a high-quality mathematics experience for all of our students, we recognize that one of the challenges that was surfaced in our committee was the equity and stratification issue. And so there's been a mixed ability Algebra I class going on since 1213 at both King Arts and Rhodes. And early updates are, you know, are very encouraging. Given our limited number of students, it's inconclusive, and there's limited data to really, you know, kind of support a really huge curriculum leap forward. But very encouraging is the fact that, you know, some of our data is very promising in that the Algebra Placement Test that ETHS administers, our Algebra I pilot students are comparing favorably to Algebra I students that are in a homogeneous group. Ninth grade placement, 76% of our Algebra Pilot students place in geometry or geometry honors. And, you know, that's something that we should note and, you know, pay careful attention to as part of the overarching body of evidence that we're collecting to make our decisions. And so I say that to bring up the next slide about what our next steps are, and that we have to consider that we are in a constant state of continuous improvement and thinking about what our data tell us. But we also need to refine and think about what are the questions that are driving our thinking and that are driving our decision making. So one of our next steps is to develop metrics to answer some questions. And those questions are really related to how lower achieving students are, how the heterogeneous grouping affects their increase in achievement. But also importantly is to think about that we have high-achieving students in that population as well. And so what does the effect of heterogeneous grouping have on those students? And also importantly is to think about our race and income gap. And are there ways of thinking about how heterogeneous grouping can close the achievement gap by engaging all of our learners? So the metrics, as you'll see, are ways that we are thinking about helping to address those questions using MAP data, looking at college readiness benchmarks, looking at spring-to-spring growth and how significant that is, and comparing that across a number of groups of populations. What's important to notice, too, is that what eventually is going to bubble up is that if these are surface-level questions, there will likely be other questions that will emerge from that that we'll want to dig into a little bit more. So with that said, we'll move forward to the student placement criteria and process. So important to frame this conversation by looking at our current state or basically what we used last year, what the process was, and what really helped to inform how we would move forward in this school year. So this slide basically describes for you a graphic of all of the instruments that were used to evaluate mathematics placement last year. So a variety of instruments that were being used. And some of the major challenges that surfaced in our committees and our different focus groups really was, without having to read every bullet, one of the major things was there's just too many instruments being used. I mean, that was like the first and foremost. There are a lot of instruments being used. And then the other piece that really emerged was this clear-up understanding of if we're using these instruments, to what end are they actually providing this data? And what's the purpose that it supports or provides? And then this, the idea of assessments that we're using, known in a lot of circles, Iowa Altra Aptitude Test and the Orlean Tana, is that it again adds two additional days of testing to our calendar for the students that are taking these assessments. And what's interesting is this common play, this theme about how we need to think about the implications of the Common Core and the deep understanding that is really asking for in our students. And in looking at these two tests, there are limits to how well they align to the Common Core. So to address these challenges, we basically frame them by five major buckets of work, each of them building one on top of the other. And the first is to say, what are our principles for mathematics placement and process? We should think about that first. Use that as kind of a guiding, a guiding set of principles to say, okay, so we wanna pressure test against what we're doing. So we start with these principles. Then we think about what characteristics do we seek in our students? And then from there, what are the instruments that we use for math acceleration? What's the criteria then? And then what's our process and timeline for the placement process? So here are the principles. There are quite a few of them. But the basic premise of them is that we wanna make sure that we're identifying and positioning our well-prepared students to access and be successful in these courses. Important that we minimize the additional assessments. Important that we include a communication process that's transparent. But also important is that we provide some mechanisms to determine if a student is placed in an accelerated course, how do we ensure that that is actually the right placement? Because if a student struggles in the middle of the year and continues on that path, we have to consider what, you know, what implications that has on a student's learning trajectory. So the student considerations or the characteristics are really this idea of being able to demonstrate exceptional achievement and potential as well as their abilities to really approach the mathematics and have those habits of mind that allow for them to be successful. So I'll take a moment to get to the place where we're looking at our instruments that are being used for acceleration. So you'll notice that in contrast to the slide from 2014 was that there's a narrowing of the amount of instruments. And this is a response essentially to a lot of the challenges that were raised. And that is to many instruments. And so the idea was narrow down to a number that's manageable and understandable. We have three instruments that really get at content-based measures with a qualifying exam and MAP and bringing in teacher expertise with a teacher survey. There's a description of each and of purpose for how, what the data tells us. But one important footnote here, and you'll notice it by the asterisk, is to keep contextually in mind that we need to consider the context for our course sequence for next year. And then if we are doing course skipping next year, that, which is the case, that our qualifying exam and our MAP scores, those content-based measures really need to take a look at the command that students have of the content in their current grade level as well as the facility with the content in the next grade level so that when they do land potentially in the next course, that the content that they're skipping over doesn't deprive them of the access to the next level course that they're taking. So I'm gonna take a moment in the next three slides and do a little deeper dive on each of the three instruments that I discussed earlier. And I'll start with the qualifying exam. And in essence, it gets to those places. So if I take one example a row of the Math V to Math V to place into Math VII, the Common Core math content that is assessed, again, is fifth grade and sixth grade content because we're skipping over an entire year of learning. So we have to proxy for the fact that students, we need to know how students, how much command they have so they can access seventh grade learning. Each of the assessments has about 20 to 25 items, a mixture of item types, and are administered in 60 minutes. With the MAP, I wanted to kind of land there real quickly because it is a measure that we use in this district in D65. But there are a number of ways to use MAP. You could look at a number of different measures and different ways to splice and analyze data. But in the, particularly in the teacher focus group, when we were working with teachers and talking about the different ways that we could look at MAP data, essentially where we landed was really putting a premium on making sure that students are adequately prepared to access the next level course. Namely, that if they're going to skip a whole year's worth of content, we need to have some way of gauging their command of that year that they're skipping. And so where we landed was the idea of taking a look at RIT scores. And so each of the RIT scores essentially takes a look at operations and algebraic thinking. And so we were looking at skills that were aligned to particular benchmarks. And so there are a number of different skills that are listed here that essentially align to major Common Core content that we would expect our students to have a command of or a facility of to be able to access the next level course. Lastly is teacher observational data. And so this is the teacher survey tool that would be used. Really great conversation with our teachers early on about using, we set in front of our teachers a tool that really looked at the standards for mathematical practice that really dig into a student's habits of mind and how they really approach the mathematics and the problems that they're faced with. And so this instrument basically takes a number, is adapted from three or four different tools and synthesized, and then brought into the fray, basically a back-and-forth process with several of our teachers to be able to continue to refine and make sure that the expectations of things that they were looking at were agreeable and that it was a tool that we thought really measured that student, the student characteristics that we are after. So in sum, we take those three tools and we get to the part of, how then do we actually take a look at the data and make placement consideration decisions? And so I'm going to take a pause here, and I apologize for the depth that I'm gonna go to in this slide, but it's really worth doing. So what we developed was an idea of a sliding scale. So if you consider that many colleges and universities use a sliding scale when they're admitting students, this is basically the premise for how we developed this. And so the idea in the college and university world was if you had an SAT or ACT score that was super high, then your GPA didn't necessarily have to be as high, and then you were essentially accepted in. But let's say, for example, we had a student at the college/university that didn't- that didn't necessarily meet this threshold of meeting a super-high SAT or ACT. And then the question is, so then do you deny them acceptance into a college/university? So a sliding scale was developed to say, well, if you don't necessarily have that minimum threshold that the college/university is looking for, well, maybe your perseverance and the way that you really look at your work and the way you really approach, that is reflected in your grades. And so therefore GPA would carry the weight and be able to be accepted as part of college admittance. Well, in the same fashion, we developed this idea of how we look at the three measures and how we use a similar sliding scale to provide access for our students in a number of flexible points that students can be able to have the opportunity for acceleration if they meet the criteria. So before I go into really diving into the matrix itself, it's important to note that we weighted the content-based measures, the qualifying exam and the MAP RIT score, at 40% each of the entire score, and that the teacher observational data got 20% of the score. In sum, 100% of the score is comprised of the different weights of each of the instruments. So the basic idea is that the middle column essentially is the minimum benchmark that we feel when thinking about the profile of students that would be accelerated, that when we think about that student in mind and we think about them being able to be successful in the next course, that this is exactly, this is where we believe that the minimum threshold would be. And then the idea was the two columns to the right and to the left create the sliding scale. And so I'll illustrate that for you. So we have two examples. This is an example of the fifth grade to Math V to Math VII matrix where they're skipping Math VI. And so in student example A, student A gets a qualifying exam score of a 67. And if you look at the row for the qualifying exam, a 67 falls in the first column, and they're awarded eight points. In the MAP RIT score, they get a 243 that falls in the MAP RIT row in the middle column, and that's worth 24 points. And the teacher survey, the student gets a 36, I believe is what it says. And they get 16 points. When you add the points together, that's 48 points. And the student is recommended for Math VI. Conversely, looking at student B, the same idea appears, and you see that the student in the qualifying exam gets a 71, which is a little below the minimum benchmark. But in the MAP RIT, they get a 252, which is one cell to the right of the column for the minimum benchmark. And then the teacher survey, a 38, which is again one cell. So in the sliding scale idea, the student still earns 64 points. And even though they didn't meet the minimum threshold on one of the measures, overall earns the 64 points garnered to be able to be recommended for Math VII. And so in essence, this is the idea of how the math placement decision matrix works. So I took really careful notes the first night on the job. And John and I were invited to the Math Matters meeting to basically learn of some of the concerns that our parents wanted to share with Dr. Goran. And in one of the handouts that Jennifer Phillips handed to me, I noticed this idea of a process map. I thought it was a really good idea to be able to articulate within a very complicated process, how we're able to communicate what that looks like from beginning to end. But I think it's important to note that it's very helpful just for myself, the person that was designing it, to really think about how I was pressure testing, how this worked along the way, and to think about what that then means in terms of our own communication internally with our own staff, our own principals, our own teachers, and the community to really have a clear and transparent process. So you're seeing here essentially where you start and how you kind of make it through. Some points to really surface here that after we've had the instruments that are being, the content-based measures and the teacher data piece, that parents are notified in the week of June 8. But one of the major takeaways earlier this year was that we had some parents that were notified, and those were typically the parents whose child was placed in the accelerated path. And then another set of parents that didn't receive any communication at all. And there was a lot of confusion that emerged out of that. And so learning from that, one of the major things that we'll be doing is sending communication to all parents about placement decisions. And then essentially, from there, the process essentially goes to, if accelerated, where to go; if not accelerated, the paths to go throughout the process, and what we would do to understand how students are placed and where students will begin their next school year. So going into the timeline and next steps.
Can I make one friendly amendment?
Yes.
And this is just in the spirit of learning. In one of the asterisks, you point out that if the data are accurate, the parents may opt to meet with the principal and teacher to appeal their placement. And in this case, the school has the final mathematics placement decision. My friendly amendment would be that the school, in conjunction with the central office, would have that ability to do that. Just so that we, again, if we're committed to consistency, we should actually be thinking about what, again, if one school is making a decision and another school isn't, we need to at least know that and be able to facilitate that decision process.
Thanks, Paul. I'll note that. And you know, with any updates that you make to this, I think it makes sense to resend out with that amendment in. Thanks. So lastly, and it's almost like you have to do the back-and-forth between these two slides to really kind of get the play on it. But the idea is that if I were to give you just the timeline, you really don't get a sense of the process at all, like what's happening at what step in the timeline. So important to understand this piece of the process, but also important to understand what are the actual dates and things that we would think about. So you're essentially seeing when the different instruments are at play in terms of MAP, the qualifying exam, the teacher survey, as well as ways of building articulation with our principals, our teachers, both at the middle school and at fifth grade, and when our final map placement letters are going to be sent to families. So realizing that there was a lot of detail, my big smiley face says a big thank you to, again, to all of you for really taking the time to hear about this work. I'm really proud of the process and about having been really open to working with our colleagues, both at the local level as well as the school level, as well as ETHS and our community. So a big thank you to all of you. And I just want to thank all of you for taking the time to hear what is a very complicated and detailed process. So thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Because it is so dense, I imagine we will have a number of questions. So I open it up to the board for questions.
Should I go first?
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. I guess I liked the fact that there was community involvement and that you reached out and sort of counted everyone that was involved in it. It was a very diverse group. My question is about the Algebra One pilot, the strategy behind it. I just want to know, you talk about that that was just one strategy. What would be your other strategies to address equity? Or what do you see in other districts? What are other districts doing to also address equity?
That's a good question, Omar. And you know, part of my learning curve is to understand the full breadth of resources that we have in the community. And I'm aware that we have, and maybe I might be mistaken, so if I'm incorrect, please someone correct me. But I know that there was work done with Project Site previously around how we think about working with our underrepresented students early on in their mathematics career to get at that. I think one of the other things that we need to continue to do is to continue thinking about engaging all learners and how we do that in the scheme of instruction at any class. And that's how we really start to build the equity agenda is to make sure that we're addressing high-quality teaching and learning that's accessible to all students. John, do you have any other?
There's, I think there's two other things. I think one of, for example, the Math Fluency Teachers Project. It's initiated this year. Some of our members and many parents are participating in that, which is just one part of the broader strategy to intervene early. It's a part of our pre-K to 2 focus to close the gap that we see in our reading and math scores before it starts to widen in third, fourth, and fifth grade.
And if I add one more, we've talked about identifying early outstanding performers in the earlier grades. And so especially if we want to diversify the attendance in the higher-track classes as we move on, that there's some processes that we can do at the earlier grades.
Just curious, with the new process and everything else, do you think it would be more students participating in compacting, not the course skipping, but in future years out? Or do you project it to be about the same amount as soon as that is participating right now?
It's a good question. And I've actually been asked that question several times. And it's difficult to quantify a number at this point. I mean, what's really important and what I would place at more of a premium, and I speak on behalf of my colleagues that, from the teachers that were part of the teacher focus group, is really the idea of how we're identifying well-prepared students to be successful. So the criteria in mind that we developed was all about how well are we positioning our students to be successful? And so we'll continue to learn from that and see how that kind of plays out in the idea of building that part of our work.
Hello. More?
No.
Katie?
I just have a few questions. First of all, this is great. I really, your presentation, in addition to the whole report, was very clear and laid out well and thoughtful. And I am impressed with kind of the steps in the process and the fact that you involve the community. Thank you to the teachers and faculty that are here today, who I know helped with the process, too. So I really am impressed with it, and I think it's a great idea. I just have a few questions.
Sure.
And Omar, thanks for asking about that because that was one of my questions, too, because the issue of underrepresentation and how we address it should be something that we continue to address as a board. And I'm glad that the pilot is continuing. And I like the way you're thinking about analyzing it as it goes forward. It's been exciting to see it and to look at how kids are doing as they go through the high school and tracking kids. And I mean tracking by following children and seeing their success. I think it's an important step. The longitudinal analysis is how you said it.
I have one question, too, a couple of questions. In the compacting, and maybe you touched on this, but you know, actually, I didn't notice this summer, of course, when I read it the first time. But when I paid a little more attention, I got that. Is there, right now, best practice for compacting? Or is there other districts struggling with this? Are there materials? Are we creating old materials? I mean, I understand it's probably why we're waiting a year.
No, I mean, absolutely, there are districts that are struggling with this. I mean, there's a number of different models of compacting. There's looking at two years into one, three years into two, four years into three, those kinds of ideas. If you ask the Common Core writers, they would really go into four years into three to really kind of build that depth across learning. But what we also wanted to be able to balance was the idea of how we continue to build on the work that we have been doing and honoring that work as we go along. You're absolutely right in that there are a number of ways of kind of attacking that problem. But I think the first and foremost way of doing that is to really identify the major learning, the major focus for what we are hoping that students have command of by the time they exit a course. And so in the spirit of thinking about compacting, it's both the balance of thinking about what's the major learning in however many courses you're compacting, and that what are the ties in particular with those learnings? So one of the great features of the Common Core is that it's intended to build, these domains of learning are intended to build and scaffold one on top of the other. So there's a natural kind of connection between the learning that happens from one year to the next. And to be able to find those connections, zero in and think about what's primary in that learning over the compacted year is really critical. Now, that's easier said than done. Hence the idea of taking the year to really be thoughtful about that. And part of that is to really think about what the research basis is behind that and other districts that have grappled with the same issue. But part of it also is to kind of, you know, pressure test against our own views and thinking about what is absolutely critical for students to learn. But also very important is to involve our high school colleagues in that same endeavor and thinking about that idea as well and having them be involved in that process.
It is complicated. Yeah. And I just, I want to say, I like the way you said it. We want to position students for success. And you know, we got back to gateways. And I just want to go back to way back before everybody was tied, but a beloved math teacher by the name of Sandy McDermott, who we honor every year, the Sandy McDermott Walkathon, who was a teacher at Nichols before she passed away, really said to me at one point, she said, you know, Katie, what you want is you want kids to love to come to class, that they want to love to learn about math. They feel challenged, but they want to feel successful. And that is a fine balance, right, between finding it success and finding them challenged. And she was just really magical with kids. And I just feel like I need to say that after you said, position students for success, because she did it. I feel like I needed to say that about her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, wanting to go back to the pilot for a minute. So we started, this is the third year of the pilot, then? We started?
Yes.
No, second year.
We're in the?
We're in the third year.
Thank you, Amy. Third year.
So we're in the second year. Okay, thank you.
We're in the second year. No, we're in the third year.
I feel like we're in the third.
Still, I believe this is the third year.
Is it relevant to your question? I'm not sure if it banners two or three.
Yeah, it does.
But the? It's the third year.
So, I mean, I feel like it's important to highlight in the packet, you did, and I know whenever we've looked at the data, there's always been the concern that, we're talking about two, a very small student population. So it's hard to really extrapolate any conclusions based on such a small number of students. But we do have some high-level observations here that are in the packet. One, that high-achieving students achieve at high levels in any class with a slight edge to a mixed-level class, such as what's going on with the pilot. And that average and low-achieving students achieve highest in a mixed-level class. And I think those are really, really important observations to note. I'm glad that the pilot is continuing, but I also have some concerns of how are we, if we consistently have a problem that the data is of such a small group that it's hard to really make any clear extrapolations, if we don't expand the program somewhat, how are we ever going to get enough numbers? You know, I, we talk about developing metrics to address these very complicated questions. But I'm not clear about how the metrics that are here are actually going to help us get to these with the pilot, the way it's currently structured and the numbers that we have.
That's a good observation. I think when looking at the data that I have presented, I'm going to kind of talk about my own personal transition into the district and my learning of the Algebra Pilot program as part of the context. And that is that, you know, the questions that we seek to answer that I framed into the slide earlier are really important ones to consider. And I don't feel currently that the data that we've collected is deep enough to be able to really ascertain at this particular point in time the extent to which we want to make a curricular leap.
Oh, and I appreciate that.
And that was really the major point. It wasn't so much that there wasn't really encouraging It wasn't so much that there wasn't really encouraging data. I mean, it's, it's very encouraging, but I, I think we owe it to ourselves, our students in particular, to dig deeper, even if the N, the number of students, is a little smaller. I think if we look more deeply and start to see, wow, when we look at the data that much more deeply, when we, when we really think about other ways of measuring it, other than the two that I provided, that it provides the case for us to say, okay, let's, let's take a step back and think about what that means about what our next steps are. And so that's, that's kind of where, where I'm at right now personally. And, and I've also talked with, with my colleagues about that as, as part of that decision-making. John, I don't know if you were called.
Let me add, Jess was very disciplined in here to say that these are observations and they're inconclusive. And I think we want to not settle on that, we want to answer your question, Sunny, we want to go deeper into how can we actually leverage data that can give us some conclusions so that as decision-makers on the, on the administrative side and the board side, that we can actually make a good decision. So part of those conversations that Jess has had is with John and with Peter Gudar, and looking at our database and really trying to dig deeper into what can we learn from the pilot as we continue on in the, in the year to come that can get to what you're itching at, I believe.
Right, but so, but how are we going to do that then? What, so we have ideas of, of how we're going to dig deeper?
Well, I think we've raised other, I mean, there, beyond the, the sample size, there are issues with comparing the pilot set to an average-weighted set of Algebra 1 and 8, when the profile of pilots, the pilot students is skewed differently. So it's, it's difficult to conclude that achievement is higher when you don't take into account what the balance of those students are. So we have to be able to do that, we have to be able to do that, from my perspective, to be able to analyze that data and say, okay, when we account for the profiles of these students relative to the largest, you know, the, the universe of Algebra 8 and Algebra 1, which is somewhat different, then what does it look like? Right? So that's one piece we can do with the current population that was lacking, or has been lacking for the last several years. And I think it's a really important piece, because we're, we're dealing with a few percentage points in difference, and so, you know, it isn't, it isn't compelling to me unless I understand that it, that, that there is a clear difference in achievement. So, so I will say from my vantage point, that would be one thing that, that has to be established, even, and in sample size piece, I think is obviously a different thing, because that requires reconstructing the pilot itself, which is a, is a good question, you know, whether you can do that within the magnet setting, potentially, you know, a proxy of a longer, larger classroom would be one option.
And if I could just add on to that, I think last year when we looked at some assessment data, it was broken down by race and also by quartile, and I don't remember what the quartile comparison was against, but we saw that the students in the lowest quartile weren't moving up.
Right.
And that was, so I think that's a really important part of this analysis, and maybe as you revise this packet, you can include the historical numbers. Now, I think unfortunately, there might have been some calculation errors in some of the charts that were there, but at least as an indicator, that was one of the red flags that went up for us last year. And I did have that as a point, question.
I think one other idea and possibility that we have is in our partnership with University of Chicago, we're going to have access for the first time to rostered student responses to the, for sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students who respond to their 5E survey. So we're going to be able to take, while protecting students' anonymity, we're going to be able to take those rostered student results and compare them to achievement and add in an aspect of social-emotional academic press for students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade as well, that will help to further enrich not only the academic data, but add, add to that a level of complexity and depth as well from that social-emotional side. So that's one of the ways that we can help to deepen our understanding.
And I guess the other observation that I would make is that, given these two observations, again, that high-achieving students achieve at high levels regardless of the class, and that average and low-achieving students do better in a mixed-level class, that, you know, I, again, I do, I echo what others have said, that this is, has been a great presentation. I appreciate the thoroughness of the work, and I think as far as, you know, creating a scheme for course compacting and tracking, which is essentially what we're talking about, that this is a thoughtful and, you know, a very thoughtful one. But with what we, with these high-level observations we have, and I understand that we have to refine them still somewhat, but, you know, given what, I remember the teachers from the pilot came in and were very enthusiastic about it, I believe there were other, you know, teachers at other middle schools who wanted to, to test it out, that we're putting in an awful lot of time and effort in creating a system and a tracking system that ultimately may be antithetical to reducing the achievement gap, which is really what we want to be doing. So I just put that thought out there that, and I guess, I don't know what happens, how, at what, like, what happens if the pilot, I mean, I don't know how many more years we think we need to assess it to determine whether or not it's successful or not, but if it is, if the, we continue to observe this and when we get the deeper data, it still supports these observations, do we go back and reformulate all of this and, and all of the work that we're putting into compacting the course becomes not as?
Compacting doesn't apply to this algebra.
What do you mean? I think it does.
No, compacting is relative to sixth and seventh grade, algebra is after that, so the two are different, top, different issues.
In some senses, but I think the point of the Algebra Pilot though, is that trying to create success for all students in a mixed-level class, and whether that is, you know, answering these questions is, is this going to be ultimately helping us reduce the achievement gap? And if it does, then I think it would follow that if, if tracking is not necessarily the best idea in eighth grade, why would it be a better idea in sixth and seventh grade?
We're not tracking. I mean, I think the two things are very?
I would argue that the course compacting is tracking, that you're either putting them in this class, it's a compacted class, or they're going into their regular?
Tracking by definition implies that there are no on-ramps after someone is placed in a certain, in a certain group. I mean, I think there's obviously broads, well, we just talked about the, the ability to have on-ramps. It's definitely acceleration. It's, it's treating different kids differently, yes, it is, based on their achievement. But I would say that the stigma around tracking is a much different stigma whereby you are taking students and you're putting them in a certain track, and they have pretty much very, a lot of difficulty of ever getting off that track onto, you know, higher level, and, and then additional to that, the curriculum is poor and the teaching is poor. So I don't think, we, we don't have tracking in District 65. I mean, I just want, you know, because we have high-quality teachers, we have high expectations for all our students, and we have high-quality curriculum. So when you, I, I just, it just gets to be a little bit difficult when we start down this, you know, the rabbit hole of labeling something tracking when the, it's a, it's a topic that, that has a lot of definitional discourse around it.
I, I agree, I think saying acceleration, but the, the idea though, that in acceleration, you have students who have all accelerated, right, whereas in Algebra 1, the pilot, you have a heterogeneous group. So in some sense, they are somewhat related, right? You could say, do we?
The kids that are accelerated are in a heterogeneous group, right? So they're still in a heterogeneous classroom and a heterogeneous setting, they aren't taken out of that heterogeneous setting, they're intermixed with other students.
With the course skipping, the way it's been?
With the compacting and the course skipping, they would still be inter, I mean, they're not separating out those, I mean, I don't know how you're going to attribute on them.
Maybe I'm not understanding.
Well, you know, I guess it, it depends. Let's say, right, let's say you go from math, was it math six to algebra? Is that how you do it? Help me, math six to algebra now, right? Or you go, yeah, you can go five to seven or six to algebra, right?
Correct.
So if you go from, and this is kind of an interesting point, but if you go from sixth to algebra, you're with all kids who are in algebra, so in some sense, you are an accelerating group. By definition, they're all in algebra. Now, it is, we don't do honors algebra anymore, right? It's an algebra class, it doesn't differentiate between honors and regular, it's algebra, correct? So in some sense, you have eighth graders in it, you have seventh graders in sixth.
Right, you have eighth graders, and so anybody's taking that course is in it. So it's a heterogeneous course, to the extent that?
No, in District 65, we have honors and we have Algebra 8.
There's Algebra 8 and Algebra 1, right?
But Algebra 1 isn't?
It's not per honors.
It's, it's Algebra 1, right? I mean, it's honors, they're not differentiating between regular or honors, let's say, like you would, with geometry. I'm right, right? I'm looking, right, it's algebra, we're all learning algebra.
But then what's the difference between Algebra 1 and Algebra 8?
Ah, I'm sorry, I'm a math teacher, I was going to explain it, maybe you should explain that. I'm out of my depth now. I just think, all I just want to add, in some sense, when you accelerate, you put together a group of people who are all accelerated, whereas the math pilot is a mixed heterogeneous group, they're not all, some of them would be Algebra 8 and some of them would be Algebra 1.
True, but some of them are folks that have been accelerated into algebra that skip. So it's that same group that's in the pilot. Well, that's, that same thing happens in the non-pilot classes too, is all I'm saying.
Right, absolutely.
It happens everywhere. You know, my daughter currently is in algebra with eighth graders and seventh graders, and God knows, maybe there's a sixth grader in there, I don't know, I don't think so, but it's possible, so.
You're making a distinction, you're making the distinction between heterogeneous by age versus by, I don't know. Yes, yes.
Could we just use the example of skipping below algebra? So if, if we use the example of skipping sixth grade, right, fifth to seventh, you have those kids who are sixth graders in a seventh grade, fully heterogeneous class, correct? Is that, is that correct, Jess?
I'm sorry.
So when, when, right now, with the skipping methodology, we're getting off-topic a little bit, if, if a child skips sixth grade, they go from fifth to seventh, when they go in seventh grade, they're in a fully heterogeneous seventh-grade class. Is that true?
You have students that are seventh grade, yeah, it is heterogeneous by virtue of age.
Well, it's also heterogeneous because seventh-grade math is not, is not skills-based, it's, everybody's in seventh-grade math, there's no skills-based.
She, you are right, you are right. But when you get to algebra, I'm looking at Amy here, but algebra isn't, you've got kids who are all?
You have Algebra 1 versus Algebra 8.
Yes.
Yes, that's the only place in the district that we have skills-based sorting, that's correct. But, but the original discussion was around heterogeneous and this, and acceleration, and I was just trying to make a point that, that kids who are skipping classes, who are accelerated before algebra, are in heterogeneous classes, just so that we know.
But we're, we're getting away from course skipping, though.
Okay, so let's?
So we would be creating more separated classes.
I don't think so, because if you would compact them, they're going to go into the next level class and it would still be?
What you're, what you're trying to say, Sunny, is the shift from skipping to compacting is slightly more tracking than what we've had in the past, which is what we're saying, what you're saying is, we have in fact, skipping is, on some level, it's differentiating by, by skills-based, so it's the different pace at which you go through. But you're saying academically, it's better for these kids to compact it.
Absolutely.
Even if we are veering slightly closer to the tracking model, even though it is not tracking, but what, we're saying it's better for these kids, so are we really, so it's a philosophical question, are we going to steer away from what's better for these kids because we think it comes closer to this, this concept of tracking that we want to stay away from? And you're arguing?
Well, no, well, what I'm arguing though, is that we have observations though that show that it's not, that the tracking is not necessarily better for these high-level kids, and that it might actually be detrimental to the role.
We have, we really have to look at the data much differently.
And so I agree, but I don't, I, so I guess I'm trying to figure out where, how are we going to get this data from this pilot?
Well, I think what we're asking for is for the pilot to be set up in such a way that the data is useful when it comes out. And it has not been useful to date, because it hasn't been looked at closely enough as it goes into the model, right, the students?
Yeah, and that's, that's what I tried to frame in the, in that second slide, was how we would think more deeply about that.
So, Sunny, what happens after we do analyze the pilot and look at this model and hopefully have some usable data? Then we come back to the point, are we committed to accelerating students, and if the new model's better, compacting, then are we committed to it? And we as a board have to talk about that, but I don't think that's the question we're talking about tonight.
And I, I was going to say, I really want to emphasize, we need to have that historical data too, not just the most recent analysis, because the historical data told a different story, which is why we didn't expand it last year. So, you know, it might be different one year to the next, but we had real questions about that, so I don't, I don't know what the right?
The historical data, my, my recollection is that the, it did tell a different story, but then the story it was telling was incomplete because it is of small samples.
It was, just like this one is incomplete, but my point is?
And I, so I just, I just don't understand if we're not actually increasing the numbers, the sample size numbers, how are we all of a sudden going to get different?
We're increasing the rigor of the analysis by, by looking more closely at the students that we funnel into the pilot.
And if we, if we look at, you know, all of the historical data, the numbers increase.
You know, maybe, there may be other variables that we need to take into account, but, you know, as each year passes, we do have an increase in the numbers.
Okay. Wait, I'm, so how do we have an increase in the numbers with each year?
Because you have cumulative data.
You have more students who have completed the course.
Oh.
Cumulative data.
So each year, I got that.
So I think we look forward to the next year, both looking historically and looking more closely at the balance of students.
Candace and both have questions still.
Yeah, no, no, I know.
Okay.
You're just summarizing that.
No, that's just that, it was just that piece of it.
That was just part one.
No, I have a lot of questions too. Who would like to go?
Go ahead, Candace, you got a good start.
I got a good start, okay. So first, I, I want to echo what everyone said about, you know, totally applaud Jess, the inclusive collaboration that this process has brought forth, especially with respect to including 202 in the high school to the degree that you have. I think that's something that we have been asking for, because at the beginning of this, and this is more, at the beginning of this, a lot of the proponents or the, you know, advocacy towards change was supposedly coming from the high school and that, and the end goal, you know, we want to get more kids into, for, for the Algebra Pilots specifically, we want to get more kids into higher level, accessing higher-level math. So it's obviously critical that we understand then what's happening once the children get to high school. So, and I have, I actually think the compacting makes a lot of sense. I think I would echo the point of making sure we have as many on-ramps as that we can, so that it's not a once and done, once you get tested in, in fifth grade, that then you don't have an opportunity to, to get accelerated after that. And, you know, and so one of the related questions I have is just like, the summer piece, in, if you're going in sixth grade, is there, is that, would there be another testing process for, to see who could do the summer class? I guess I assume that that's the case, and qualification, and then obviously they'd have to take the time to do it.
No, absolutely. I want to echo the, the fact that we want to place a premium on making sure that students are well-prepared and able to access the next-level course. So students that would presumably be taking a Math 7 summer course, or any course for that matter, we'd want to think about what types of measures we are putting in place to ensure that students are indeed set up for success. So by virtue of a student being in a Math 7 summer course, it doesn't simply provide a rite of passage all of a sudden for you to become, or for any student to say, okay, I'm in the Math 7 summer course, so automatically I'm going to be going on to, you know, on to the accelerated class. Students would, yes, have to demonstrate that they have built enough of a command of the mathematics in order to be able to continue on to the next-level course.
So I have, I'm going to split my questions from acceleration and pilot, because I think they're slightly different, and I'll start with some just specific questions and I have some more general questions. So specific was in, and we talked to this a bit, the setting of the new? So specific was in, and we talked to this a bit, the setting of the new benchmarks. And I love the idea of the sliding scale. But the setting of those new benchmarks, is, is there an easy way to map that RIT to, for us? Because we kind of know the world of percentiles, you know, and like MAP percentiles. Is, did, did you compare and contrast to where that same benchmark for MAP at least would fall relative to the percentiles? Because we're coming from a place where most of these cutoffs were nine, I mean, we varied over the last several years, 90th, 95th percentile generally, locally. How would that compare to the, the, the RIT score benchmark?
No, it's, it's, it's a good question. We didn't look as closely at percentile as we did at the skill levels that are tagged to benchmarks for, for the MAP RIT scores that were the benchmarks. So we looked really closely at the likelihood of students being able to master various skills given X RIT score. And we essentially mapped that on to what are the content expectations for a student to be able to access successfully the learning in the next course? And we put a premium on that. Now, I think it would be an interesting analysis. I appreciate the, you know, the, the nudge on it. And I'm, I'd be more than willing to take a look at, at how that kind of plays out with percentile ranking. But we really put the premium on, on a student's command of content.
So going in, we don't know if this will be, you know, significantly less students than we have been accelerating in the past, same or more. We don't, we have no, we have no point of view on that right now, without that analysis.
Well, we do, in, in our process, one of the things that we did, and I mean, it was actually a very complicated process, but we actually mapped last year's student data for students that, that took the spring map from last year, to see how that actually played out. So what we actually did first was we said, let's put a premium on the, on the skills that students and, and that students need to know and be able to do, right? And so we did that first. And then we said, okay, so well, how does that actually play out when we look at data broken out by numbers of students that actually scored in those ranges? And it was actually really comparable to the way that the course placement for students were this year, in terms of the way that they kind of were distributed over time or over the, the different ranges. So we did do that level of analysis and it was, it was pretty thorough.
Okay, okay. Then this question is a little more, I was confused in the document. The procedures, there's a procedure in the appendix for fourth grade, but it's just for this year. Is that, that procedure isn't how the case-by-case system would work going forward? Or is it, I, I was confused over that's just for this year? Or that's, and would go away next year?
No, we would propose that that would be the procedure.
That would be, okay.
Moving forward. But again, to echo Paul's comments earlier about how we continue to learn, I'd, I'd wanna say that we would see how that really plays out and, and make refinements as needed.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's great because I think one of the concerns we have is, you know, when you say case-by-case, but it can be very subjective, right? And so having a consistent, whether it changes or not, but at least having a consistent and transparent way that the case-by-case is gonna happen, I guess is, is good. It's, I, I think that's good.
And that's where the data, the data drives this. I mean, the, the data that are 80% from the testing and 20% from teacher expertise is, is a way of helping us think about placement.
So then, that's the specific thing. So then the more general thing is, you know, I tried to take, take a step back and, and very much appreciate the goals, setting out the goals for acceleration, and especially the fourth goal relative to preparing historically underrepresented students for success and access to these, these types of accelerated math. And the question I have is, how do these particular recommendations support and impact that goal? Not irrespective of the pilot, but how do you see these recommendations around the changes in acceleration helping us in that, in that vein?
No, I appreciate the push on that fourth goal. And that is very similar to Omar's question from earlier. And so I would say essentially that the same response kind of applies. And that is that the Algebra One pilot is, in essence, one of those ways of us really taking a very deep look at how we get at the underrepresented folks, the equity stratification piece. But then some of the points that John and Paul made up as well, or came up with as well with respect to how we look at students earlier on really kind of gets at that.
But the, the changes to the acceleration, not the pilot themselves, don't have anything today necessarily that might be, you know, around identifying high potential students.
That's correct.
Or recruiting. I mean, you know, in some districts, I know in Maryland, you know, they've done a really good job of identifying and recruiting students who, who might be candidates for acceleration and trying to nurture that earlier on. And so I would suggest that's something that, you know, as you had said, Paul, something we could look at. Okay. So then, the other, the other thing that I had questions about with, with respect to acceleration was really in that, I don't know, it's on page, I don't know where it is on the presentation, but it's in page five of the deck, where the, you talked about the challenges. And, and one being the equity and stratification. So, you know, we, I think it goes back to what we talked about a little, little bit earlier. We are a district that has one skills-based leveling class, right? Algebra, that's the only class in the district for the, however, you know, the eight years that kids are gonna, nine years that kids are gonna be in the district. Do we have any evidence that says that achievement, when we do that stratification? So that place in algebra, Algebra One or Eight, that's the place, that's the only place we do any stratification. Do, what is the evidence that we have that says achievement drops in some measurable way relative to all the heterogeneous math education that we have coming up to that point? Because I, I understand that may be an issue for the high school because they do a fair amount of stratification, right? But I, I'm not sure unless we say, you know, what, we're seeing performance drop substantially, meaningfully, some way in algebra relative to what has happened up until those points, that then I would understand that, that is a problem that we need to address. I don't, I haven't seen that evidence, so I'd love to see it. And it, it points me rather to the other issues of, we need to be doing a better job to prepare students, all of our students, to play on that level, in that playing field once they get to eighth grade. And so that's why I just have a little bit of a disconnect in the logic model to where we get to these assertions. And I, I don't, I'm sure it came through a very, you know, rigorous process, but that's, that's kind of my, my, scratch my, I have a head-scratcher on that.
I think that, Candace, that last bullet point comes from, not from research or analysis done of District 65 data, but based upon body of research across the country and internationally about what often happens when there are especially race-based characteristics to student participation in different classes. So it's not based today, and it's a question that Jess and all of us are very keen to, really understanding what happens in District 65. But that bullet point is really, is based upon broader research outside of the district.
I, I made this point in our conversation that because the research is so divided on that question across the country, that we really need to look at our own data and see what's happening here, rather than looking to theoretical models.
I think that's right.
And Candace, I really agree with what you said. And I, I wanna build off it because I think the terminology that I personally prefer to use is about preparedness-based as opposed to skills-based. Because it really is, in a lot of instances, about the preparedness of the students. So there may be students who have the skill capacity, but they just haven't been exposed to the opportunities along the way. And so I, I liked that you were using that terminology about preparedness because I think it, it reflects a, a problem or a challenge that we can do something about, as you said, in the earlier grades even.
So I know I'm taking a lot of mic time. I have just a couple more things now. Shifting to the, the pilot piece, thanks for hearing me. So as, as, and I think this is a little extension of what we've already talked about because we had talked about this as a board before. So what is that, those measures of success? So we, so we don't have to keep coming back saying we don't have enough, we don't have enough. A couple of things that we have talked about as a board in the past is, and you, you talked about the MAP data and, and to what Richard said, you know, a big concern of the board is what, the lowest quartile. And making sure that this type of construct isn't detrimental to that lowest, that lowest quartile, especially right now in the context of our strategic plan and our focus on moving kids out of the lowest quartile. And that was some of the evidence that we've seen in the past, that while kids in the middle did better in the pilot, kids on either end didn't, didn't do as well. So it is a little bit different than the results, the observations you have here. So I, I think we, we definitely need to understand that, that lowest quartile. And then looking at the performance beyond the current year MAP testing for placement, which you have done, and there really isn't, you know, a significant difference in placement between the two groups. But then also, how well are kids doing? So, and here's to be a place where we could collaborate, and that might be your, your definition of achievement. But, you know, how well are kids going in that geometry? And even, I think we've talked before about Algebra Two because Algebra One is a precursor to Algebra Two. So how can we get that longitudinal data back to Katie's point? And then my other pet peeve is really the comparison of the pilot achievement data, taking into account what I'd said earlier, taking into account the profile of the student population. We know in, in looking at the data from last year and the, in the magnets, the kids were, were, the profile skewed in terms of the, the percentage of kids more on a higher scale than if you looked across the rest of our schools. And so we need to be able to take that into account when we look and, look at these kinds of results. And then lastly, I just, you know, I think there's an importance of, one thing I noticed in the, in the pilot summary was while the percentages of kids that get placed into geometry is pretty comparable between the pilot and maybe slightly higher, higher for the pilot than the combination of Algebra One and Algebra Eight, it's pretty comparable, but it's a little bit higher. The split of those kids is much different between, between honors geometry and regular geometry. And so there's like 78% of kids coming from Algebra One that get placed in honors geometry, 56% of kids coming from the pilot getting placed in honors geometry. And I would, I would love to learn a little bit more from our colleagues at the high school because I, I don't have kids at high school, so I don't know this yet. But what, from what I've learned, what I've heard is that honors geometry is one of the gateways to that higher advanced level math. So if we are aspiring to get more kids access to higher level math courses, we need to keep our eye on that ball. And, and that, that particular, you know, kind of, that particular proportions are a little concerning. Because we don't, you know, we have, we'd have to make up a lot more kids getting into geometry to, to stave off the reduction in kids getting into honors. So that was just a final concern I had.
Can you answer, somebody can answer that. Just, I wanna make sure. You're saying, when you, in order to take AP Calc, you have to take honors geometry?
I, I'm putting the question, I don't know for sure.
No, I just think it's important that we...
I think the question is if you go on...
Okay, I just, I just wanna finish because I, because I did, well, two things. One is, I think there may be more reasons why we want kids to have that opportunity because when you go into honors geometry, yes, you can be taking BC Calc. But I think, Martin, I, you could go and take AB Calculus in the regu, in geometry, correct? I mean, so I just think that's important that people know that.
No, I was just gonna say, I think the question is, you can do it from the regular track because you could end up in AP, I mean, AB Calculus your senior year. But how many regular trig students end up in AP? I think that's a good question, that they jump into the AP class from the regular track. And that's a good question to pose when you're analyzing the data. Not theoretically whether they're able, but do they?
Well, if you're taking geometry, then you take Algebra Two, then you take trig your senior year. If you're gonna take math, if you don't, you have to take AB Calc.
Unless you take topics enough, most of, yeah.
So, yeah, you could take three, you can only take three years of math, but more likely... So I think the question is, are you taking four years of math? If you take four years of class, math, you're gonna be taking calc. I just think it's important that people know that. I mean, that's, still, taking geometry your freshman year offers you a lot of opportunities. So I just wanna make sure everybody knows that.
Agreed.
Just because you asked.
Although it's complex, embedded in the report is this map for 1617, which shows multiple ways for a young person to have his or her journey through high school and land ultimately in calculus or statistics at the AP.
And I, I like the map. And Candace, any question, something you said is really true. And I think, you know, the education is important, that you have many, many opportunities because of coming through our district, no matter what classes you're taking, because it's a very rich math education and the high school has a lot of offerings. And I like that chart, but I think there is, sometimes if you haven't been through it, right? You may not know it just because it, it's a big black hole before you go over there to know that. And I think the communication to families is very important, that not only do we do math well, but there's many opportunities for success in math in the high school and beyond.
It just points to the fact that we would love to see that data as students travel through high school. I think that's the open-ended question is, what are the results of these changes?
I do have a few questions.
Wait, Candace, are you done?
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So this is finally just a clarifying question. The two observations you had around the algebra pilot, one was students that performed comparably to Algebra One on the algebra placement test. You know, it was in, there was like a two-bullet section. And so what I wasn't, didn't understand that is if they, if they are performing comparably to Algebra One students, like trending towards Algebra One students, which is great, wouldn't we expect them to then get placed in geometry at this, at similar levels? So like 99% of kids in Algebra One are placed in some form of geometry. And it was 76%, which is also strong for the pilot. So I didn't, isn't that placement test what, what tells, what dictates whether they go into geometry if they did well enough on that test?
Among other factors that the high school considers.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But what I did not do was do a correlation between performance on test and placement at high school.
I see.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, got it. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay.
All right. Great. So I just wanna echo a couple of things that Candace said that I had noted that I felt really strongly about. One was the correlation of the percentiles to the scores so we can see and maybe predict a little bit more effectively. And the student profile is a really important part of the analysis. So thank you for raising those. I did wanna talk, I guess there are probably three areas I saw questions about. One was about the parental involvement in the process. And it seems like they're involved after the decision has been made and during the appeal process. Is that the way that I should read this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking, I don't know. Can you restate the question?
Sure. So just thinking about parental involvement in the decision. And it seems like once, you know, the, the students have taken the two tests, the parent, or excuse me, the teacher has weighed in. And then a recommendation is made to accelerate or not. And the parent has a chance to, you know, accept or deny the acceleration or appeal the non-acceleration. Is that the point where the parents are involved? And I just, I wondered if that reflects the input from the committee. I, I don't know, but I know one of the things that we heard loud and clear was input into the decision. And it sounded to me, as I read through this, although there was an asterisk that I had missed, that the, generally the appeal would be focused on data accuracy. Although I don't remember exactly what the asterisk said, but it said something about essentially appeal for non-data-related issues. Do you have a pretty high degree of confidence that reflects what the, the committee was wanting to recommend in terms of parental involvement?
Well, I mean, if we're talking about the overarching stakeholder groups that pass through, the, the number of different layers, I would say by and large, yes. I don't know that we, in our community group, really got deep on that particular question. It was something that we did talk about in our original teacher recommendation.
If I could add one thing?
Sure.
I think one thing that, that we heard clearly, starting last summer and through this process is that what, one of the issues that makes parental engagement difficult is the lack of transparency around how these decisions are made. And so it's, it's been difficult in the past for parents to support... And so, it's, it's been difficult in the past for parents to support their child, know where are we, are we tracking towards an acceleration decision or not, because it was really hard to understand how these decisions can be made.
Yep.
So I think the transparency, here are the bars, here's the teacher survey, here are the RIT scores that are expected, does support parent engagement in this process much, much earlier, from the first parent-teacher conference, if not earlier.
And I should have started with this, thank you for that additional information. This is such a huge step ahead of where we were a year ago, night and day. So, even though I'm probably asking some tough questions, I appreciate all of the thought that clearly went into this. I know you've heard that, but can't hurt to say it one more time.
Thanks.
In terms of that appeal process, what I, I do wonder about, as the decisions are made with the school, and it sounds like the, at a district level, it probably would be useful to have some guidance about factors that would be considered in that appeal process. So I could imagine a student was sick, and maybe their overall score was 58, so they're really close, and they did poorly on a test and happened to be a day they were sick. How would that be handled? Or if, and this is actually one that my mother, the math coordinator for her district, had talked about a couple of years ago with me, which is when students take a placement test, if they're close on the overall mix of scores, again, let's say they're, you know, 57, 58, and there is a concept that is holding them back from being accelerated, and maybe that showed up in, in both of the assessments. Can we teach them that concept and see if we think, you know, they would be an appropriate candidate to accelerate? So just raise, you know, a conceptual barrier and maybe a health impact as two gray areas that I think the district should be prepared to respond to, and, I'm sure there are many others, but you're the expert. So, I'll leave that to you.
Thanks.
And we indeed talked about this today in preparation for the meeting, we talked about, what if you're on one, just very close to the threshold, as John puts forward?
Yeah.
What does that mean in the appeal? And the question that we would have, and this is why we want to have, that's why I did the family meeting, because we want to be relatively consistent across schools. We don't want to have eight, let me just use this, an eight-point flexible entry for one school and a two-point for another, and we want to be able to be nimble and respectful of the situations that kids are in. So we're trying to create, and we also want to have Jess and his team do the work in a way that's both respectful and efficient as well, because the, the, the time is limited as well as the horsepower is limited to do that sort of work.
Great. Another area that I was curious about, and this may show up more next year as you're planning for the compression, or is that right?
Compacting.
Compacting? Sorry.
Good synonym.
Same, kind of similar, right?
Mad my mom's hat.
Okay, sorry, didn't mean to bring you back into it, Candace. So, just thinking about the individualized way that we can compact and maybe leveraging technology to move students forward. And what I saw on the map was just something I took note of, which is, looking at it as a course and creating a new course that compacts concepts. But is there a different way that isn't necessarily about creating a new course, but having something that's more individualized, that allows student progress at a rate that may not fit nicely and neatly into a course? And I don't know what that looks like, but I would just toss that out for consideration, and maybe you have some thoughts, in particular, as it relates to instructional technology and how, that may support this, or maybe there are some problems with that? I don't know, you don't have to have an immediate reaction, but I'm all ears if you do.
I think there's some great opportunities there that we need to pursue.
Okay. Then the, the last thing, I, I was just curious about the comment, and I believe someone else mentioned this, in the acceleration process, something to the effect of there are cases where kids struggle. And, you know, I think we can, for anything that we wanted to find, we could probably find cases where we could say this supports our viewpoint. What I guess I'd be curious about is, when we put that out there, is it a pattern that we're seeing? And I think this gets a little bit more to the data analysis, because when we say there, you know, there are cases where kids struggle, is, is it a pattern, or is it really not significant? And it left me just wondering where that is. So I think when we dig more deeply into the data, we'll understand how prevalent those cases are for kids who have been accelerated and then they struggle later on. I should clarify, that was the area of struggle it was referring to.
Okay.
That's it.
I will echo what everyone said, I appreciate you taking feedback from the community and from board members and really reflecting on it as you went along. If this is a great product, I think that, I think the fewer assessments are a really a step in the right direction, I really like that. I think the process map is excellent, the earlier communications with parents is a great thing, because I think parents waited throughout the summer and the letter would come in August. And I think the compacting versus the skipping is really academically sound, and I, I think that really makes a lot of sense. I have some questions about the particulars. Because I've been around for some of the modifications where we were trying to make it more transparent and involve parents in the process, I think I was a little disappointed that parent, parental input was a new thing that we'd introduced a couple of years ago. Parents felt very cut out of the process, and so we brought them in and said, we're not gonna just have you appeal at the end, we want to hear, do you think your child is eager to do this? Do you think your child has good work habits at home? And I, I do think to say we're completely taking them out of the process is not necessarily a step entirely in the right direction. And I'm not certain it should be weighted in the same way, but I, I do think valuing and honoring and listening to parents, because they have a very good indication of how, how committed a student would be to taking on this extra work. So, that's one question.
Just a point of clarification, is that a survey?
It used to be, I mean, we introduced that a year or two ago, that parent, wasn't that the case, I mean, you're, I think Barb did that.
It was last year.
Last year, she started to bring in parent voices into the process.
It was supposed to be. It was a teacher survey, and then students had a self survey, not the parents.
Which maybe, again, this is, you know, you're listening to both the interest of the student and their ability. I think the interest of the student and their work habits are really important when it comes to this decision. So I don't think cutting that out entirely is necessarily the right direction. The other thing is, we've always had a mechanism for retesting because of issues like sickness, because of kids do stumble on one, one area, and then they learn it and they want another test and another try. What we tried to do, we were doing the retesting in September, which didn't make a lot of sense, so kids were missing some of the course that they were placed into. So we were trying to have a, a time period in August or at the end of June where kids could be retested. And I think it's essential that if kids are close, or they're sick, or they don't know one concept, that they are given another opportunity. So I want to think about how you put retesting into the mix. The other thing I'm worried about, and it's when you say you have no idea whether this increases or decreases the number, it assumes a problem with how kids are doing at the high school if we're not necessarily committed to sending the same amount of kids up to the high school on this accelerated path. So, I haven't seen any data that these kids are struggling, and I would be concerned if we cut that number in half of the kids we're accelerating, because it's the same end goal, where we want kids to get to AB, BC, and some of whom's Northwestern courses by the senior year, we want them to have access to Chem phys. So I think it would be really important to either model this, this new test, or when you do get the preliminary results, look at what that percentage looks like versus last year and say, hey, we might have been a little off on this, because we just doubled the number, or we just cut it in half. And that would give me some peace of mind, that we're not tampering with something that in my mind is not broken at this point. You know, by the accounts of teachers I've talked to at the high school, they don't think we're sending, you know, a great number of ill-prepared students on this accelerated track.
And actually, I think, if, I don't know how the other board members feel about this, but I think that would be something important to share back with the board, so that we have a, either the model and/or the actual acceleration results from this year at a macro level, just so we have a sense of what's actually occurred.
I think it's important. This is kind of getting down in the weeds, but I also have, on that same note, I have a question about the sliding scale, which I think is a great idea, but I think it's, it's not as sensitive an instrument as I would like to see, because when I look at the MAP RIT range of 241 to 250, that's a whole, I mean, I don't know MAP numbers that well, but that's almost a year's growth right there, isn't it? A nine or 10-point range in the RIT score? Is that, I mean, that's a big, that's a kind of a lurk, I mean, I'm just wondering why.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, I was, I'm sorry, I was trying to.
Sorry. You know, 241 to 250, that represents almost a year's growth in some cases, I know it varies, but it's a pretty large range. And what I'm, if I, I'm taking a scenario in my mind, a child could get 250 on the MAP, 74 on the qualifying exam, and 29 in the TESR survey not qualify, but they could also get 241 on the, on the MAP, which is a year, almost a whole year behind, 75 and a 30, and qualify. So I'm not, I don't understand exactly why we don't just wait and average those numbers, as opposed to putting them in these very, these larger categories.
The range of the RIT scores are tied to the skills. And so that's, when we look deeply into the research around how MAP is developed, those skills are tied to the range of scores. And so that was the basis by which we developed, or we used those, those, I guess, ranges of RIT scores for each of the columns. So it wasn't so much about growth as it was about the skills that are associated, or the preparedness.
I understand that you're not looking at growth, but it seems like it's a pretty, well, I know there's a band of error in that, but, but is, do you understand what I'm saying, though, in terms of the refinement of, of the way you're looking at these students, that you would, you could come up with scenarios where kids were not, were at different levels and they weren't reflected in their overall score? That they scored high on the MAP in that range and fairly low on the other two, and yet qualify, and then they, you know, it could be a little skewed in those categories? And I just, and is there a reason you wouldn't just go for averages and not cutoffs that would reflect, you know, having a high MAP and a lower, an average in the other, are you following me?
I, I certainly follow you, and I think it's a good point, and I think the sensitivity of the tools that we're working with is, so we want to make sure that's as sensitive as possible. I, I think in response to that, a couple of things are in place. One is that I think Jess and his team are trying to use the MAP test in the way that it is designed to be used instructionally, and so that's where the use of the bands comes from, and the research that underlies the MAP, the measure of academic progress assessment from NWA, is that they deliver to us basically a probability that students that score in that band have a specific probability of understanding the skills that are related to that band. So, your point is really well-taken, I think Jess's, the design here is to use the assessment in the way that it's designed to be used. And also, I would just say that it's an effort to set, really, we want to support students who are ready to make acceleration. And so the word that Jess used earlier was, these are the minimum requirements where we think a student would be ready for acceleration. So, the setting of that bar and the sensitivity also is something for us to, that I think the work that's been done is superior at this point, but because we have fewer measures, because they're more transparent, we're really gonna be able to fine-tune these and really dive in deeply and understand how well they're working over time as well, be much more responsive.
And if I, if we do what you asked earlier, which is, look at the numbers, let's shake this out and say, we've increased by five, or we've decreased by 30, those are compelling for us to go back and to calibrate, recalibrate, and be, and be clear on what we're doing.
Okay. Great. And the last thing, I think you clarified this for Candace, but when you say you're going back to a case-by-case, and against, this is about prior work. When we first, when Katie and I were both on the board earlier on, it was case-by-case, and it tended to be students who had more communicative parents, who flagged the fact out that a kid is really interested in math. And so we worked to make it more uniform, so kids were tested. So you aren't saying it is case-by-case, but there is, and if you hit a certain point on the first test, you will be tested.
That's correct.
Because I would really hate to go back to that.
No, that's correct.
Okay, great. I misunderstood that meaning.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's all I have. Any other? All right, so I think we'll expect to then see this again, and, and with some refinement in two weeks, or is that, or are we seeing it again before the end of the year? I'm confused. Does it come back in?
Well, the.
Can you just provide us the information you asked?
Yeah.
Well, there are two, there are two things, right? One was the refinement of what the process will look like, and the other piece would be the modeling and/or actual.
Yes, okay.
Macro results.
I think we'd love to see some refinements to the process before it goes out, with some of the input we've given you tonight, is that reasonable?
I think it's, it's really difficult, given our timeline, to want to get started with the process. I mean, we're, our hope is to communicate with principals and with teachers, this week actually, and to begin the process of, of continuing forward with, with the work that we're doing. So I, I think the, while I understand, you know, the, the needs for refinement, and we can make some refinements, what would be really difficult is not being able to, I guess, move forward, I don't know, John, if you have.
I think some of the issues, Tracy, that have been raised, for example, a mechanism for retesting, we can absolutely come back on and really consider, how do we do that? What is the mechanism? I think the, another important issue that's been raised is, is the appeal process guidelines, factors that would impact the appeal process. Our thinking is not complete on that aspect of this, of this document yet, and so absolutely we'll come back, and as we take your feedback and the feedback that we're continuing to get.
Well, and maybe, what I'm even hearing as you say that, is being able to break down what matters that you communicate right now, and there may be some things that you still have time to refine that it's okay if it's not communicated this week. You know, the guidelines for the appeal process.
Right.
You know, maybe that still takes a couple, two, three, four weeks to be refined, and that's not ideal, but it's probably fine.
I think that's right.
Okay. And then if the numbers are significantly, I mean, I think different from last year, I think we need to hear about that and further refinements.
Well, and we're committed to reporting back on that once we do the process.
Yeah, okay.
And being nimble to, I mean, again, we, we frame this as wanting to learn, so we want to, we want to move from the nine evaluation instruments down to three, and if we do the three well, or potentially a survey or some sort of input from students and/or parents, that we can at least reflect on what we've learned from that as we move forward.
Great. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have informal presentation from the public.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marjorie Fajara. This is the first time I am speaking before you on behalf of my four-year-old son Jacob. And I say first, because as the mother of a young child with special needs, I'm sure it won't be the last. When Jacob was six months old, he was diagnosed with a very rare disorder known as trisomy IXP. I'm a pediatrician, and I had never heard of it before, but now I'm an expert. Initially, I believed that having a child with a rare disorder was a mixed blessing, although isolating at times, the wonderful part was that no one was qualified to tell us who Jacob is destined to become. I've since learned from my conversations with hundreds of other parents that no one can predict the future of any child, no matter how common the disability. As our family prepares to make the daunting leap from SPAC in Cherry Priest School to kindergarten, I find myself deeply troubled by the budget cuts proposed by Superintendent Goran, namely, cutting six special education teaching assistant positions and 6.75 reading specialist positions. Jacob's experience in the inclusion program at Cherry has been nothing short of phenomenal. He has far exceeded all our expectations. After attending the Illinois Includes Conference last year, it was clear to me that inclusion can only work if teachers are given the appropriate supports they need. Teaching assistants and reading specialists make meaningful inclusion possible for children like my Jacob. Everyone deserves to be both supported and challenged academically. We wouldn't think of cutting AP honors or accelerated math classes for our students, so why consider reducing staff critical for helping our young children with special needs not only survive, but excel? not only survive, but excel? Investing in special education pays off with reduced costs of caring for these children when they become adults. I was shocked and ashamed to learn only last week that Illinois ranks 50th at providing state funding for public education. This is absolutely unacceptable, and we must demand change. So this is a call to action. The united voices of our wonderful community demanding increased state funding should not be drowned out by politicians telling us it cannot be done. We need to be as relentless as K Street lobbyists and as creative and resourceful as our classroom teachers. In the words of Mahatma Gandhi, "When the people lead, the leaders will follow." When the federal government is able to come up with $325 million to pay for park testing, then we can no longer accept there isn't any money. It is amazing that this incredible investment has been made to roll out on such a huge scale, testing unproven to be a reliable measure of student progress, not to mention concerns that there are inadequate accommodations in park for students with an IEP like my Jacob. I believe the robust pushback by families in our very own community is not just about park testing per se, but a protest against the blind dependence on standardized testing and inadequate support and trust in our classroom teachers. I'll end my comments by telling you, and I just passed around a picture of my adorable little boy, I'll end my comments by telling you what is possible for all of our children with special needs. Jacob's pediatrician is an amazing woman. She's the proud mother of 20-year-old triplets. Her son, who happens to have Down Syndrome, is currently attending the University of Iowa and living in a dorm, and as she tells me, loving the college lifestyle of sleeping till noon every Saturday. When I asked her if she could have imagined this very future for her son, she answered with an emphatic yes, and added, "You need to keep the bar set high for Jacob, just like you do for your other kids." So I respectfully ask for your support for keeping the bar set high for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will have a full discussion of budget concerns and cuts next Monday at the finance meeting, if you'd like to come to that. Thank you. There's no further business before the phone?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Oops.
I'm Robert Long, 1828 Ashland, I have a daughter at Rhodes. And just very interested in the math program, part of the Math Matters group. And I guess some of the concerns I have are, it seems to be that this is moving kind of quickly. I know that there's a schedule of going to talk to people this week, but it seems that a lot of the issues are brought up at the parent meeting and with the Math Matters group weren't addressed, and that this is being pushed through kind of quickly without having parents really know much about it. The agenda was put out, I guess some people have seen it, some people are looking at it tonight. We've forwarded to as many people as possible, but a lot of people didn't show up because they weren't aware this was going to be happening. A lot of parents have concerns and issues they'd like to bring up, and it would seem important to have further discussion. There's a lot of questions everyone had about how things are going to work, how the processes will move along. One of my biggest questions is, what about before fifth grade? My daughter's in third, she loves math, but she is having trouble paying attention in class because she's so bored. And so the teacher has, give her extra work to do and do things like that, but really what she does, she sits in the back of class, she has her own little desk, and she has the kids that have trouble come up and ask her for help, and she teaches kids math. That's her acceleration, that's her differentiation she gets. And to me, it seems that there needs to be some sort of plan, case-by-case basis, but to, I think, forget whose point it was, what does that mean? What is case-by-case? If you have a process, grade through K through, or through five through eight, which is phenomenal, I mean, everyone agrees, we've seen nothing today, this is, this is amazing. We actually have something in writing that tells you what happens in a process, but why is there not that for everybody before then? Why is there not anything from K through four? There needs to be a process. Saying it's case-by-case, that's what happened last time, case-by-case. Well, we all know what that turned into. It'd be nice if there was a process, you spent the time to do it for everyone else, why can't we have something else for all the other grades? The other point is just, I understand you have the data, how things are going to work as far as to take the MAP test, and then there's a process, which is wonderful, but at that point, what is that process? I take, my child takes the MAP test, is it automatic, a little thing pops up, says, Charlotte should be tested for next, and what, how does that all work? What are the intricacies of, she scores this grade, that means this pops up, I get a notification, the parent involvement early on? What is that? I mean, I understand you want to talk to people, but talking to people and telling someone about something when it doesn't seem really well-defined on how exactly a process will work? If that is the true presentation we saw, and the detailed memo of how everything will be done, it doesn't seem very complete to me. It just has, we're taking the test, this, this, where's the parent? How do you get the notifications? Computerized? Is it automated? Do you pull kid out of the class? How does, those details have to be defined? And to keep saying, oh, we want to talk, we want to get this thing pushed through, I understand that, it sounds like railroad to me. I mean, there are other people who have a lot of concern about this. This was a big issue last year, our numbers were all skewed. I think Jennifer has the numbers, and it was, they don't make sense. The math didn't make sense last year. This year looks like we have good information, but the full picture is not there for parents to look at, and for the community to look at, and for the board members to look at to really give good feedback. So I just, my main thing is, take your time. I understand you're in a rush to get things done, but you're making a lot of progress. Why rush through at this point when you could take the time to really make a better, tighter working sites program that there aren't a lot of questions about? That's it, thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to say, in terms of not knowing this was going to be discussed and such, I'm sorry that you weren't aware, and there might be some ways we can improve our communication. You know, we really, I think this board is deeply committed to being transparent, and I think we've made a lot of progress from the time I first joined the board. Just so people know, you know, we post the agenda, we're required by law to post it three days, so it's usually posted on Friday for a Monday board meeting. And so you can always know, looking at the agenda, this one happened to say math acceleration update, you know, if it's going to be on the agenda. We do talk, and it's harder to pick up on some of this, right? If we talk about when we're going to add something to the calendar, because that might come up during a board meeting, it might just be one minute. So that's difficult, but I'm just sharing that because I want to make sure people have clear expectation of what you can count on, and you can count on seeing the agenda three days in advance, which is usually Friday at noon, is that right, Adila?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Usually Thursday, by Thursday at five.
By Thursday at five, usually, so that you can know what is or is not going to be covered at a meeting.
So I'm going to resonate off of some of what Rob said. I'm Jennifer Phillips, I live at 3651 Grove Street. Clear progress from a year ago, no question. Compacting and, versus grade skipping, another great leap forward. But I think one of the things that I have grave reservations about is, when is it that you're going to let third and fourth grade parents know that this is happening for next year? I think a lot of parents in this district who know of the past process might be expecting that their child might be able to skip fourth or fifth grade math next year. I'm sorry, fifth, fourth and fifth, no, fifth and sixth grade math, sorry. And in this presentation, there was no alternative presented. You've heard me ad nauseam up here talking about differentiation, and I think acceleration is a form of differentiation, and needs to really, at some point, need to get to the differentiation for all different types of learners, including this plan. And I think that goes to the algebra pilot discussion, that the name of the game here is preparedness, not trying to change the rules when a child's 13 about which math class they should be taking. It's really about figuring out how, what the third graders right now need to have as a path going forward, and which ones, you know, may need a boost to get into Algebra I. Because if you look at the numbers on the Algebra I data that's presented, we should be trying to get everybody into that kind of range of preparedness or skills level. So I really hope in your plan for talking to principals, there's some community announcement or something that this is, this is the play for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just wanted to clarify, because I think that maybe Jennifer, there's a misunderstanding, because, so for next year, and again, if I'm reading this correctly, for next year, there would still be the option to skip fifth grade. It wasn't discussed in, in the presentation, but in the packet, if you go to page, it's in the appendix, right? This is what we were all trying to clarify. I don't know, Jess, you find it more quickly.
Page 18.
I know, but there's, the case-by-case basis is delineated in the packet, just as a process. There is a clear process. It's not case-by-case coming up. So just to refer to, help me figure out the page.
Page 15.
15?
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's on.
I said 18.
Students are rolled, and students currently rolled in math four, page 15.
17.
It's in the, it's in the middle, it's in this yellow bracket, like acceleration is on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
And so, you know, you think about equity issues, like who's gonna, people, who's gonna pay attention? Who's gonna be knocking at your door?
I understand that, that's why I think it was confusing to a number of us, but there, in the detail of the appendix, there is a similar process to what's used for sixth, seventh, and eighth, for fifth, for fifth grader, for fourth graders, rather. Not through K to three, that is still as it has been, which is the case-by-case, to your point. It's not, but for fourth graders, a process that is similar to that which we just talked about, the benchmarks for fifth, for the, for the later grades. So I would ask you, just take a look at that. So I'm not trying to refute what you're saying, but just trying to, you know, kind of add further clarification.
I have a question about that. When you, when the shift occurs from what is happening now to the case-by-case, in the past, parents of fifth, incoming fifth graders were sent a letter whether or not their child was accelerated to sixth grade. Are we doing that still? We need to know what the expectations, what parents will hear in each grade. In the past, it's been parents don't hear anything until fifth grade, but they do get a letter going into fifth grade whether or not their child, in fact, it didn't happen last year, but it's happened in years past. And it should happen if it's-
Yes.
-if they're being tested. So I think we need to make it clear that everyone will hear one way or the other coming into fifth grade.
Correct.
Right, okay. And the other thing is, when we do see numbers back, I would like to see the numbers at each level that kids are being accelerated, how they compare this year with last year and the years prior to that. Because I think if this case-by-case turns, comes up with a different number of kids being accelerated, either a lot more or many fewer, we need to evaluate whether that's a good move. And, and the makeup of the students who are being accelerated. Demographics, just to make sure we're not just capturing the more vocal parents or kids.
There might be other speakers.
Any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Dave Zier. 1110 Stewart Street. I'm also part of the Math Matters group, and I'm just going to refer to some of the things they were talking about. But I think the main part that I want to make is that we're talking about K through eight, and when you're talking about acceleration, I think you need to talk about starting earlier, preparing, you know, talk about the well-prepared student, I think you need to prepare the students earlier. I even think there's, there's room for accelerating, and there was, you know, a previous pathway to skip fifth grade, but I communicated in the meeting that I thought even a possible application of the compressed class idea for a third and fourth grade class would be something to get those kids started, to get those kids engaged who are, who are bored in class and need, need to be engaged. I would just like to see something happening, so those kids from K to six aren't just relegated to waiting for something to happen in their math education. They, you know, you don't want those kids to get bored, the ones who are excited about math. You want those kids to stay engaged, to keep their momentum, to be excited, to be curious, to be able to explore that. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
My name is Andrea Quintana. I reside at 2439 Prospect Ave. I'm really impressed with the amount of thought and dedication that is been put towards this map of accelerating and compressing some of our instruction. I would like to see as much thought and processing of how to get our bottom children up and prepared. It would be really good to invest that. I know a lot of the education reform is being driven by the PISA results, and our top students are not equal to the top students internationally, but what's really dragging us down is the large bottom. And so it's really important to bring those kids up. You're right, we should be getting almost everybody into algebra in eighth grade. One of the things that happens at ETHS that's fantastic is, there's so much support. You have AM support, you have the Math Center, you have the Wild Kid Academy, there is just so much support if you are struggling. Now granted, at the high school level, they are more independent, but if you push the kids and you give them support, you might be surprised who can make it.
Thank you.
I just want to also highlight that in the strategic plan that we just approved two weeks ago, that one of the areas that is going to be on our scorecard for the district for the next five years is looking at students who are in the fourth quartile, and how we're making movement with those students. So it will be an area of focus for the district.
Just in math, are there any other areas?
I'm reading others.
Reading that.
I have a student who read 180 in sixth grade, and I heard that program might be eliminated. It's the one program, the program I see that actually has evidence of I can succeed. So I'm just concerned. I don't know if the memory is right.
Thank you. I think we'll address all these issues at the finance committee next Monday. I, I think I can echo what your remarks you've made. I think once we get some of this roadmap, this process piece figured out, I think then we will have the focus and the energy to do what we always really like to do, is talk about those early interventions and the supports for the lowest quartile, which will be, I hope, the next math meeting we have at the board level. Thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.